Everyone, welcome council staff, special guests, media. Before we begin this evening, I ask that we take a moment of silence for the death of a loyal and devoted, well-loved employee of the town of New Glasgow, Kenny McNutt. Kenny died on Friday and has been with the town of New Glasgow for 23 years. Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much, Joe. Appreciate, appreciate all of the support by council and staff, for sure. Okay. As we gather this evening, we pause to remember that in this province, we live and work on lands that are by law the unceded territories of the Wabanaki peoples, predominantly the land of the Mi'kmaq. May we live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with its people. We also recognize the African Nova Scotians, whose culture, heritage, and history have been and remain a key part of our province for more than 400 years. With that, we're going to move to the public hearing. We have three development agreements, and we're going to start with the development agreement 753 Mary Gomish Road, PID 65242646. Is there anyone here to speak to this matter? Is there anyone here to speak to this matter? Is there anyone here to speak to this matter? If not, I'd ask for a motion to move to council for second reading. Moved by Counselor Peters, seconded by Deputy Mayor Dorrington. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, we have a development agreement for 582 Little Harbor Road, PID 00994772. Is there anyone here to speak to this matter? Is there anyone here to speak to this matter? Is there anyone here to speak to this matter? If not, we have a, could we have a motion to move to council for second reading? Moved by Counselor Mc, Counselor LaCraiser.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Peters. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We now have a development agreement for 448 Stewart Street, PID 00933176. Is there anyone here to speak to this matter? Is there anyone here to speak to this matter? Is there anyone here to speak to this matter? No, could I ask for a motion to move to council for second reading?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor McKenna.
Seconded.
Seconded by Count, Deputy Mayor Dorrington. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Thank you to our role in the case as well. Okay. At this time, I have a very special presentation that I'd like to welcome David and his family with us here this evening. And for anybody that's been in council chambers before, you've noticed probably this amazing artwork that surrounds us and follows you up the stairs as you come. We have a painting to add to our collection. You could sit there, David.
David Asseltaker, born and raised in Glasgow, a National Art Queen. David's medium is aerial, with his main inspiration being the early work of European masters. His works have appeared on national nature stamps, and he has been commissioned to be Canadian business and women rights leaders. His work have been palmered for both the hometown and in town, especially in the mission hall. David's work were first commissioned by the town of Glasgow for a heritage painting series as part of the Glasgow 100th Innovation Plan in the early 2000s. Paintings in the heritage series showcase town inhabitants and leaders, as well as heritage land, streetscapes, shipbuilding, picture and landscapes, and historical structures, such as the current town chapel and former train station that was on the back wall. David's painting for the Glasgow One Fifties fifty anniversary celebration pays tribute to the East River, the lifeblood of the community, and is a community gathering place. The painting also gives homage to Glasgow's industrial past and its current role at the Commercial Service Center, as well as the community and cultural gallery of life. It highlights the picturesque beauty of freshwater, saltwater, East River, and Eagle as a historical symbol, a strength and wisdom, and a symbol of renewal, preservation, and preservation. The river, the eagle, and fish and turtle are revered symbols of nature in many cultures, and beautifully blend with Glasgow's past.
David Awona.
Really incredible, of all your work here, for sure. I look long at it, and set one of the paintings aside. We all follow the digital in the bottom four words, but it's been seen here. And here's the town hall. So, did you have anything you'd like to say?
Well, it's just that, I mean, I'm so honored that you can get a picture of my work and everything that's represented, you know, like it is. I mean, that's the ultimate thing for me, you know, and I was kind of surprised that I was asked to do 150. And I thought, wow, I'm honored, you know, to do it. Because of all the communities and things that I've done the paintings for, I'm more appreciated here than anywhere. And so, yeah.
Well, we really, we love appreciating people that do, that make the work. I, I just wanted to say too, this, this has become quite my testimony to the work and the history and the heritage of our town. David's being, because I'll just say to David before we came up, that our, it started a number of years ago. We use our town hall as a location for people to come in. And I'd say the majority of people were not aware that everybody council chairs, and certainly not aware of the scope of art that's in this building. And we've taken it all, sort of taken upon ourselves to give the history of some of these paintings. And I don't know if we did this all the time, but anyway, we really appreciate it. These are particular to us.
I don't know.
Oh, dude, this is really, really interesting, because the tram park and the rail on this upon Provo Street in Port. And you can see the town hall, and, you know, I think, oh, how many years ago, we, we located those, those rail. From 10 years ago?
No, less than that.
Less than that, yeah. So a lot of work's been done, and you really have embraced the story of the history of Glasgow. It would be more honors to have, have a painting here, and.
Well, it's mutual.
I was going to say, can we get a picture with council? Okay. Oh, yeah.
Maybe with your family, too.
Yeah, we'll let the pictures.
Hold on, but.
Hold on. Oh, yeah.
Seconded by her.
Well, sir, we'll be here, and we're working with agents on that.
Okay.
Just go, you can move in that jacket or.
Why don't the guys tell? I said that sometimes, but I don't get rid of everyone. Seems like.
Oh, yeah. This is like the rails.
Well, I'm like. Okay, Joe.
We gotta get you over here.
And, and. Everyone's got to push in a little more. Lisa and Frank, I have you guys in the back. Ready? Thank you.
Uh, to move to the family, one, two, three.
We'll get one with the family, then maybe next you can give them one as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll talk about that.
There's another country.
Thank you very much, David.
What, what we following? Okay, yeah, because I missed this year. It was a different day. I'll be sending you home soon.
Sure.
Thanks, everyone. Let's just go backwards one minute. We have to approve the agenda. Sorry. Moved by Deputy Mayor Dorrington.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor McKenna. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, everyone, for that. And next, we have a presentation, our audited financial statements, with our auditor Heather Murphy from McDonald &amp; Murphy. Heather.
Thank you. I'm trusting everyone can hear me okay. So you have before you the audited financial statements for period ending March 31st, 2025. The audit report, which is on page two and three of your financial statements, is where we render our opinion. And in our opinion, the accompanying consolidated financial statements present fairly, in all material respects, the financial position of the town of New Glasgow as at March 31st, 2025, and its results of operations and cash flows for the year then ended in accordance with the appropriate accounting standards. So I will briefly take you through some of the, the financial results, trying to keep this at the high level, given that you have many more exciting things to talk about tonight. So for the results ending March 31st, 2025, on page four, you will see referred to the financial assets and liabilities and non-financial assets of the town of New Glasgow at that period of time. And you'll notice the financial assets of just over 20 million remain similar to the previous period. The financial liabilities did grow slightly, 22.1 million compared to 21.7 million in the previous period. Most of this growth, of course, is coming from obtaining new financing to finance capital infrastructure projects. The financial, non-financial assets, 70.5 million is the infrastructure of the town of New Glasgow, with both the capital of general and water combined. And there was some infrastructure growth of 6.7 during the fiscal period. Of course, the growth is net of amortization reported this year. So the overall non-financial assets net position is 71.6 million at March 31st, 2025, bringing it to an accumulated surplus position of 69.5 million, a growth of approximately 2.5 million over the previous period. Page five is a consolidated statement of financial, or sorry, of operations. And this is going to reflect the revenues and expenditures that were realized during fiscal period compared to the budget and compared to the previous period. The budget expectation was to have revenues generated of 34.1 million. The actual was 29.3 million, which is very much in line with the previous period of 28.7 million. Of course, there is a deviation from the budget for capital projects, and that is all a timing of when projects are being carried out. So of course, most of this will be reflected in another period. In terms of expenditures, those expenditures of the budget expectation was approximately 27 million. It came in at 26.8 million, which is up over the previous period of approximately 25 million. Most of that growth, of course, is a result of some economic factors of items being generally costing more this year, and of course, the cost of employees and those types of costs. So the overall net surplus growth this year is 2.5 million. Of course, that's added to your cumulative surplus to bring you to the position I referred to previously scheduled of 69.5 million. Page six speaks to the consolidated statement of changes in that financial assets, or in this case liabilities. And this speaks to the change in some of your statement of financial position. And most of that change, of course, is the impact of your capital and how your capital was funded, mostly or somewhat through debt. Page seven is a consolidated statement of cash flow. And this speaks to how cash is generated and used during fiscal year. There is an overall increase of cash position of 3.2 during the fiscal year. Most of that, of course, coming from obtaining new financing to pay for some of the capital infrastructure and some capital grants that have been received and not yet used, so are available for future periods. The next few pages are more detailed breakdown of your sources of revenues and expenditures. Since we've previously gone through this in detail, unless there's some questions, I'll jump to the notes to the financial statements on page 16, of which 16 through to page 27. Yes, 27. Speak to some details. I give you some expanded description of the state, information on the statement of financial position and how some of those numbers were arrived at. The other disclosures, of course, are some mandatory disclosures that are included. Suffice to say that everything is compliant with the appropriate standards. And then at the bottom, or sorry, the end of your financial reports, you can see some on page 28, some expanded information pertaining to the capital infrastructure and some of those projects that were carried out during the fiscal period for both your general capital and water capital infrastructure. There are some other supplemental schedules, of course, reflected for just the water fund as required. So that is a brief summary of the financial results for fiscal year March 31st, 2025.
Thank you very much, very much. Great job. Could I ask for a motion to approve the audited financial statements?
So moved, your worship.
Moved by Counselor Joe McDonald, seconded by Counselor Fraser. Any questions on the motion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Counselor McKenna.
Thank you for this report. You'll recall that we did meet as a council to review this in much more detail this week, this past week. Just to verify, nothing has changed from what we received at that time?
This is true. There was some language updated in one of the note disclosures, but no monetary changes.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you very much, and I just have a few comments. On behalf of town council, I would like to share a few key highlights from the audited consolidated financial statements for 2425. Fiscal 2025 was another strong year for New Glasgow. On consolidated basis, the town of New Glasgow reported a surplus of 2,498,000 as of March 31st, 2025, largely driven by grant funding for various capital projects. This consolidated investment in capital infrastructure totaled 6,757,000. During the fiscal year, new debt was issued in the amount of 2,981,000, primarily related to invested investments in water main structure, infrastructure, transportation and public works equipment, recreation, police and fire equipment, a sewer separation project, street lighting, and street realignments. Total debt repayment for the fiscal period was 1,373,000. These investments ensure we continue to provide the high level of services that residents of New Glasgow have come to expect and deserve. On a non-consolidated basis, the general operating fund had a surplus of 481,900, which will be transferred to the operating reserve. The town's operating reserve as of March 31st, 2025 totaled 6,6,500. This will support the town in maintaining high service levels while continuing to save for future operating needs. During 2024-2025, the town, together with our funding partners, invested 5.32 million in general capital assets. This included paving, curbing, sidewalks, public works equipment, facility upgrades, storm sewer, storm and sewer separation projects, protection services, equipment, and improvements to trails and recreation infrastructure. The New Glasgow Water Utilities, Utilities Operating Fund for 2425 had a deficit of 761,600 and a 1.44 million investment in water capital infrastructure. Stewardship of taxpayer dollars remains a top priority. The strong financial results reflect careful management by departmental directors. And I extend sincere thanks on behalf of council to our CAO, senior management team, and all town employees for their expertise and dedication during these ever-changing times. This concludes a summary of our key highlights from the financial report for the fiscal year 2025. Thank you. I would as well as thanking Heather, also a special thank you to Kim Livingston, our CFO. This is, this is a tremendous job that you've done and continue to do with the help of your staff that surrounds you. So thank you for this. We really, really appreciate it. Okay, with that, we're going to move on, and I'm going to ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
May so move.
Moved by Counselor Peters.
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Jessica McDonald. Any questions on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Approval of the reports, the committee of the whole report. Moved by Deputy Mayor Dorrington.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Peters. Any questions on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The finance report. Moved by Counselor Fraser.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Joe McDonald. Any questions on motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Engineering and Public Works Report.
Yes, your worship. I'll, I'll move that we accept the engineering and public works report as submitted.
Moved by Counselor Joe McDonald.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Peters. Any questions on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The solid waste report.
I'm moved to be accept the solid waste report as circulated.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Dorrington.
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Jessica McDonald. Any questions on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The police report.
I'm moved to accept this report as circulated.
I'll second that.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Dorrington, seconded by Counselor Joe McDonald. Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The community development report.
I would move to accept the community development report as circulated.
Moved by Counselor Fraser.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor McKenna. Any questions on the motion? I don't have a question. I have a comment. And I, I'm thinking time-wise, this might be in our next community development report. But I just wanted to mention that our community development director, Michelle, presented at NSFM. It would be in the next report, wouldn't it? The November report. I'm going to mention it anyway. Presented at the NSFM conference that was held last week. She was one of three people that presented at success stories from our communities. And it was the last session of the day. And she was the last speaker of the last session of the day. But I, I did want to say that it was, it was an incredible feeling to sit and listen to Michelle's presentation that sort of took, took a sort of a whole feeling of its own in the fact that it was, people were drawn in by the story of our engagement session. And Michelle spoke deeply about how we engage and, and who we engage with and how we listen and things like that. And it was, it was an exceptional experience to, to be there and, and hear that, Michelle. So thank you very much. On behalf of us, that really, you know, like, I'll, I can second that next meeting, too. But I just wanted to mention that while I was thinking of it. Any further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The business development report.
Yes, Your Worship, all motion that we accept the business development report as submitted.
By Counselor Joe McDonald.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Peters. Are there any question on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The fire report and fire inspection report.
Yes, Your Worship, I move that we accept the fire report and fire inspection report as circulated.
Moved by Counselor Peters.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor McKenna. Any questions on the, on the motion?
Question.
Go ahead. I can't hear, did somebody say that?
I just said, but I.
You just said it, but you. Okay, thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The human resources and corporate communications report.
I'll move that we accept the human resources and corporate communications report as circulated.
Moved by Counselor Jessica McDonald.
I'll second that.
Counselor Joe McDonald. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The building report.
To accept the building report as circulated.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Dorrington.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Peters. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Strategic Initiatives and Projects Report.
Yes, Your Worship, I move that we accept the strategic initiatives and projects report as circulated.
Moved by Counselor Peters. Seconded by Counselor Fraser. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much to staff for all their work over the last month and for the reports. Onto motions. We have the second reading of the Development Agreement Amendment, seven fifty-three Merrickham Road. Counselor McKenna.
Yes, Your Worship. I move to adopt the Development Agreement for six-six-eight-one-three, Nova Scotia Limited. For seven fifty-three Merrickham Road, pit number six-five-two-four-two-five-four-six. The purpose of the amendment application by four-six-six-eight-one-three-three, Nova Scotia Limited, is to permit the construction of a four split entry dwelling.
Moved by Counselor McKenna. Seconded. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Dorrington. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The second reading of the Land Use Development Agreement Amendment, Counselor Peters.
Yes, Your Worship. I, this is regarding policy three-two-six-five-three-one-two, Nova Scotia Limited, application for development agreement, five-eighty-two Little Harbor Road, pit zero-zero-nine-nine-four-seven-seven-two. I hereby move pursuant to section two-thirty subsection one of the Municipal Government Act that the application of three-two-six-five-three-one-two, Nova Scotia Limited, for a development agreement for the property located at five-eighty-two Little Harbor Road, pit zero-zero-nine-nine-four-seven-seven-two, to develop twenty-two townhouse units with a possibility for up to twenty-eight units in total be approved by the town in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Government Act.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Peters.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Fraser. Any question on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The second reading, the Land Use Building Development Agreement Amendment, four-forty-eight Stewart Street, Deputy Mayor Dorrington.
Andrew Hickman and Val and McDonald, application for development agreement, four-four-eight Stewart Street, pit zero-zero-nine-three-three-one-seven-six. I hereby move pursuant to section two-thirty subsection one of the Municipal Government Act that the application of Andrew Hickman and Val and McDonald for the development agreement for the property located at four-four-eight Stewart Street, pit zero-zero-nine-three-three-one-seven-six, to convert the existing garage into another residential unit for a total of three units in the northern building and maintain the existing three units to the south building for a total of four residential units, for a total of seven residential units on the site and that the developer has the option to construct up to ten units provided approval by the traffic authority is granted, be approved by the town in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Government Act.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Dorrington.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Peters. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you again. Under new business, we have our accounts.
Yes, Your Worship, I would move that we pay the accounts as circulated.
Moved by Counselor Fraser.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor McDonald, Joe McDonald. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. A motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Take a moment and then before we move into committee of the whole. The agenda. Moved. Moved by Deputy Mayor Dorrington.
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Jessica McDonald. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Funder matters for senior staff. We have a recommendation from our Director of Human Resources and Corporate Communications. It is recommended that council approve the town of New Glasgow's Code of Conduct for council-appointed citizens as presented to provide clear expectations for professional conduct, accountability and respectful participation on all town committees.
I so move.
Moved by Counselor Peters.
Seconded.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Dorrington. Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have a recommendation from our police chief regarding resident requests for additional stop signs, Cameron Avenue and Robin Road intersection. The recommendation is based on available evidence, the installation of additional stop signs on Cameron Avenue at Robin Road is not recommended.
I so move.
I'll second that.
Moved by Counselor Jessica McDonald, seconded by Counselor Joe McDonald. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. We have a memo from the New Glasgow Regional Police Chief regarding the Internet Child Exploitation, ICE. It's in your package for information.
Motion to receive, Your Worship.
Moved by Counselor Joe McDonald.
Seconded, Your Worship.
Seconded by Counselor Fraser. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have the, our recommendation from the Director of Engineering and Public Works of request to travel out of province. It is recommended to council that the Director of Engineering Public Works attend the A P N Conference in Toronto on March thirtieth and thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. The registration cost to attend is three hundred, get bundled with a twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seven membership fee of two hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved, Your Worship.
Moved by Counselor McKenna.
Seconded.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Dorrington. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have a recommendation from the Assistant Director of Engineering and Public Works. The twenty-twenty-five general, sorry, the twenty-twenty-five water rate submission to Nova Scotia Regulatory and Appeals Board. Staff are recommending the town council approve the attached water rate study to be submitted to the N S R A B by the end of November twenty-twenty-five, which will set town of New Glasgow customer water rates for the next three years.
A motion to receive, a motion to follow the recommendation.
Moved by Counselor Joe McDonald.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Seconded by Counselor McKenna. Any questions on the motion?
Forgive me, a point of clarification. I believe it was Counselor Fraser that seconded it.
Oh, sorry. Counselor Fraser.
I may be catching up to him in age, but I don't think.
Sorry about that.
I drink more water.
Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have a recommendation from the Director of Corporate Services, a transfer of fiscal twenty-twenty-five general fund operating surplus. Council, the recommendation is for council to approve the transfer of the March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five general operations operating surplus of approximately four hundred eighty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars to the general operating reserve.
I so move.
Moved by Counselor Peters.
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Jessica McDonald. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Under unfinished business, we have a recommendation from the Director of Corporate Services for participation in the M F C fall adventure issuance. And this is a motion to formally approve the recommendation, which was circulated electronically, for approval of borrowing not to exceed nine hundred twenty-five thousand dollars over terms not to exceed twenty years for general capital expenditures at an interest rate not to exceed seven percent.
I so move.
Moved by Counselor Jessica McDonald.
Seconded that, Your Worship.
Seconded by Counselor Fraser. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recommendation from the Director of Information Technology. And the motion is to formally approve the recommendation, which was circulated electronically, for approval of the out of province travel for the Director of Information Technology to attend the Zoho User Conference, November eighteenth and nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five in Toronto, Ontario.
Yes, Your Worship, I would move that, one clarification, what's Z O H O? Wait, does anybody know? Thank you very much.
Okay, moved by Counselor Fraser, seconded by Deputy Mayor Dorrington. Are there any further questions on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. This is a motion to formally approve the grid application for the East River Environmental Control Center under the town of New Glasgow.
Yes, Your Worship, all move that we accept the recommendation.
Moved by Counselor Joe McDonald.
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Peters. Any question on the motion? Oh, Jessica McDonald? Gee, miss. Any further questions on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. We have a, a motion to remove the demolition order for fifty-two Donald Street.
I so move.
Moved by Counselor Peters.
Seconded that.
Seconded by Counselor McKenna. Any question on the motion?
Your Worship, this question, this removal of the demolition order. So yes, yeah, I understand that now. Thank you. Had asked the question now.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next on our agenda is a memo, what we heard report for community safety forum held on October first. That has been circulated to council and is in your package this evening. We will take a motion to receive and perhaps some conversation after that during.
Motion to receive, Your Worship.
Moved by Counselor Joe McDonald. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Dorrington. And questions on the motion?
So what is the next step for that, once we have that? Are we getting community feedback from the response to?
The, the staff, my understanding is the staff is looking for direction on, on the next steps. So we have the next steps outlined for us here. There are six of them. And I can speak to some of them just to sort of give some updates. But I think we would also, it would be important for us to address more definitively with our staff. So the first one, the homeless shelter accountability and relocation review. I would, I would suggest, request that we initiate a meeting with Viola's Place and our local M L A, Danny McGoer. If that would be okay.
Do you want a motion on this, Your Worship?
We don't need a motion, no, just a direction. If everybody's okay with that.
Can I just?
I will just mention as well that because with the, the one thing I have heard under the support, the name change of the shelter, it has been a motion by Viola's Place Board of Directors that they had voted against that. So that has been a decision that I believe has already been made by their board. So we can certainly have that conversation when we meet within that. I believe a meeting relatively soon is important.
Can I, Madam, can I ask a question? When this talks about, for the first one, it talks about the accountability and the relocation review. Can we do those simultaneously? Because I think that there's opportunity, even if we're not meeting with them at this point in time, that the citizens of New Glasgow, or good many of the citizens of New Glasgow had requested at that meeting to look to have it relocated. And so I don't think. They heard the conversation and so that we can start moving on that. And after that public meeting, I did meet with several people. And they're, they would like to see if there's a petition out. And I said, we had received a small one around people who lived in the general catchment area. And I, I told them I would bring it back to council because I think that is the direction that I heard loud and clear, is to relocate, but to make sure they have the necessary supports in place, not just to relocate. Also make sure that the supports are in place to continue to provide the supports that the people will need.
If I can add, I've had a discussion with one of the presenters that night, who is a local businessperson. And they are planning to start of that very cause and specifically supporting the idea that we do need, unfortunately, we do need a shelter, but that that location is, is inappropriate. So in conversation even this afternoon was that that petition was going to be started immediately.
Thank you for that. I, I believe we can, we can, both of those things can happen at the same time. But I think it's imperative that we get a meeting. We have a sort of a liaison committee set up anyway too, that meets with Viola's Place. And I would encourage that we get a meeting happening soon. And as well, citizens are welcome to do. And as well, um, citizens are welcome to do as they wish as well. Under the community safety measures, our police chief has, uh, sent a letter to the province requesting, um. Uh, their, perhaps, uh. There, you could help me with this. He, it, it, the, it was in our package. Just to get the wording correct.
Sure with me, worship.
I.
Um, your worship, I would say that it was very well written letter. Um, I do have concerns about, um, the report that was put out by. Viola's in response to ours with the inaccuracies, especially with regards to police, um, response. It was clearly inaccurate and I think that also will need to be discussed and noted publicly. Yes.
You.
Could I maybe just clear, just, just a quick overview of what that letter has requested?
Chief Leo has, uh, written to the province through, uh, local M L A Danny McGilvery. Um, advocating for provincial legislation, uh, prohibiting the consumption and use of, uh, control of the substances. Um, just sort of fill the gap that's missing, uh, due to, uh, federal legislation covering that.
Right. So that has been submitted.
Yes, yes. Detective Bannerman, um, the report that, uh, came from Viola's place indicated. Five calls with the New Glasgow Police. I don't know what timeframe that is in. I don't know if it's a week, a month, a day, or a year.
In Viola's report, it was five in a month.
Could you, uh, verify how many, uh, calls were made by the Glasgow Police to Viola's place last month?
I believe we're at, it was fifteen, um, we're averaging thirteen a month.
You're averaging thirteen a month and last month, you think there was around fifteen?
Correct. Of course, um, basically that's based on, uh, how the officers score within the record management system. Uh, particularly because the paralysis is in a, it's an offense based, uh, data system. Um, it's hard to actually get an accurate, uh, number of those occurrences. Um, because there's so many different options for scoring. We've given instruction to our members to sort of focus in on, on certain, um, U C R scores. Um, but it's, it's not, it's not totally accurate. If anything, the numbers would be higher.
So five is not accurate, what they reported for last month, for any month?
That's correct.
Okay, over to you, fire chief. Uh, just, could you give us an idea of the numbers of calls that you've had there?
Uh. Councillor McKenna, uh, other council members, our calls are kind of outlining the area. We have a couple of line calls there which happen to any business. Uh, that, uh, could run into, uh, detection issues. It's not so much the, the occupants. Um, what we run into a little bit is assisting E H S with, uh, some medical calls.
That's what I'm referring to.
We're probably in the area, in the neighborhood, um, for a month, we might have two to three medical assisting calls, not saying how many E H S is responding to that we don't assist them on.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow up, I'm sorry.
The accurate number that we have reported sixteen.
For last month.
For last month.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the, um. Intergovernmental collaboration, um, I. My thoughts with that, um, I, and I believe that it probably possibly is being done. I would. Would ask that maybe we request a meeting with the, um, perhaps the minister and, um, the deputy minister. Um, for the, with the Department of Opportunities and Growth. Those are the funding, the funders of, of, uh, Viola's place. So if we, perhaps we can start with that and see if we, uh, can get response from them.
The Department of Opportunities and Social Development, is that, yes?
That's what it is.
Thank you. I think that's a great idea.
Would they be the ones looking at, uh, developing the governance and shelter standards? Because I know.
Yes, they are. Yeah, they are. I think one of the, one of the conversations that has been had, uh, quite a long time is. Is the difference between a dry shelter and a wet shelter. And I think we need some clarification on that from the province. On the expectations of our local shelter.
Uh, I think from that evening that we had the meeting. I think one of the, the themes that was very clear, I didn't hear any presenter talk about that we should not have a shelter. But I did hear a theme emerging over and over and over again that the location of that shelter was, was, was not appropriate. And I, and I think that as council, um, that we need, we need to really reiterate that stand as, as, as a stand of council as well. Um, because of the issues that it's causing, uh, the issues for, for businesses, for neighbors, especially the neighbors that did, that were there before this started. And the number of calls that we're getting responding to it, to the safety of children, um, to, to, uh, banks and other businesses around. And, and the fact that we appear to be the only town in, in this area. That is dealing with this issue and having to deal with this issue. Um, a- and although we, we can't say that Viola's place is the cause of all these issues. It is drawing homeless populations in because of the service there. And they are causing issues in our downtown, but not in other towns downtown area or core area. And so it, it is a specific challenge that we have and a very difficult one, um, that, that I, I think our police and, and our town is dealing with every day.
I agree. Thank you. Um, for strategic planning for housing and supportive services, so, uh, as I believe, uh, we were told the night of the October first meeting, our M L A Danny McGilvery. Has called a meeting, uh, for November twenty eighth to, uh, bring together, um, the Picto County Affordable and Supportive. Oh, sorry, that's another meeting I'm talking about. The twenty first, yes, that's this Friday. He has called a meeting together for that. And, um, I'm hoping there will be, uh, folks present. My understanding is that, um. M P Sean Fraser and M L A Danny McGilvery will both be there. Um, and then as well, um, I've been talking to another, uh, number of, uh, mayors from other communities and specific. Specifically, Turrell and Colchester County, who have requested that we, um, have a meeting and that that meeting is on. November twenty eighth. At that time, we're bringing together our M L As. There will be four in total. Um, and the mayors and, uh, I believe our C A Os, and we're meeting in Turrell. They are experiencing identical problems, um, and, uh, they're very frustrated as well. Uh, I can also say that on the weekend, I received a, an email from the mayor of, uh, Kentville. And with equal frustrations, and, uh, he has requested that, uh, we meet as well. So. This, this is certainly not just, it, it is the town of New Glasgow in Picto County that's, um, experiencing this, but we are not the only town in Nova Scotia experiencing it for sure.
One of the concerns that's been raised to be by someone in attendance that night was. That our M L A wa- was talking about, was not talking about the insuitability of that location. Whereas the, the crowd, those in attendance certainly were. And I think that, uh, I, I, I urge the business person that I spoke with today that that's, that's got to be their voice to do that. Uh, but I think that we also need to know that that's what we heard and, uh, maybe he didn't hear it as well enough. Or maybe he's also thinking where else could it be? And, and that's the frustration and that there, there really is nothing apparent, but that doesn't mean there isn't another location.
Right. And if I can just add on to that, I think that same person, the reason they want to have a petition is they want to be able to support the M L A. In going forward as well as support the town, so, so that the, uh, political, uh, heads in Halifax don't think it's just the council here. Or it's just the M L A, but it's the citizens of the town who are behind this push. So they want to be able to do that through a petition. To support the council as we continue to, uh, talk and liaise with the government and also in support of our M L A, um, Danny. Uh, for the meeting on the twenty eighth, your worship, have our neighboring communities' mayors and C A Os been invited as well?
In Picto County?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
No. It's, um, from what I am understanding, this is a problem that's particularly affecting what I would refer to as the service centers. Um, the communities that, um, you know, have, have homeless or shelters within their downtown area. Now, um, I'm sure you've all read the, uh, report from Viola's place that have given, um, the reason why those locations are chosen. And in fact, this is where these, these, uh, shelters are in, in the other areas.
But for us in particular, I think that it, it should be noted that this is, is a regional issue, just because. New Glasgow is the center for services, doesn't mean that it's not a regional homelessness issue. And that's why I asked whether or not the neighboring communities would be coming.
Yeah. Uh, councillor Peters?
Thank you, your worship. Um, I just wanted to back up to the intergovernmental collaboration, uh, point. Um, and just that when speaking with, uh, the province, that all, a number of levels, a, a number of departments be brought in on. The discussions with the, not just the Department of Opportunities and Social Development, but housing, mental health and addiction. Um, Department of Justice, um, and also, uh, departments that work with regards to domestic violence. Um, because it is such a complex issue and that in order to create a, a meaningful strategic plan that moves beyond emergency housing. Um, that is responsive to the specific needs, um, I think that they all need to come together and, and, um, you know, fi- figure it out.
Excellent point. And just as it says intergovernmental, I, I should have, yeah, I was thinking maybe to start with that, communicating with that department. And then certainly, this is never going to be a conversation that only involves the one, but very good point. Thank you for that.
Just a, a comment through perhaps to our C A O. And that is kn- knowledge that the complaints that are coming in from the public, email, phone calls and in person. I, I think we need to, uh, and I know you do keep really good records, but to collate those records. Um, so that that adds fuel to, to what we as a town are facing, um, from. My microphone's coming and going here, sorry. Um, and, and from everyone that, that's involved. I, I think data is going to help lead this and, and, uh, and I also would think that, that, um, we are seen somewhat as being inert because. Um, people are saying, close it down. And, and I explained that we don't have the authority to close it down per se. Um, a- a- and encouraging them to, to not only call our office because they are. But to call our M L As offices, whether it's Picto Center, Picto East or Picto West. Um, the, the, the cries have to be heard and they have to be heard, um, as loud as we're hearing it. I think in order for change to happen. So I would, I would certainly, uh, start gathering monthly statistics for, for us. I think that to be presented here of what our staff are receiving, what you're hearing.
I would, I would go one step further, not just to call our M L A. I think because there are other government departments there, they need to, uh, flood their inboxes and call them personally as a citizen and the taxpayer of Nova Scotia. You can contact those other ministers or deputy ministers or heads of departments that are also in supporting or supporting this, this, uh, this, uh, social issue. In various ways, because if they're not hearing it, then it's just that one M, M L A and it doesn't bring the same weight. When they bring it up on the floor of the legislature. So I think we have to encourage, if we need to develop a list of what those other agencies are and who the contact person is at the provincial level, then so be it. It's up to them if they wish to use it, but if they don't have that, then it's not going to get used. So if you provide them with the information, they can then choose to send that in there so they can say. We've spoken with our M L A here, but we also want, because you are with the health or you are with corrections or justice, I want you to hear from me as well. So that adds, that brings more.
That's just something that I would do. So, um. Calls of complaints, emails of complaints started for the town hall, like outside of the ones that go directly to police and fire in August of twenty twenty two. So anything that's come through, um, obviously it's almost, well, three years of data. Um, but there's some days that that's all I do, um, is handle, uh, complaints. And, and I understand why, uh, citizens, I think the empathy level is getting short. Um, because of the disruption that is occurring and the use of public spaces in a safe manner. And that I can put together quite a report with respect to just the complaints.
I'm confident we have all that data.
So, so I think, your worship, I think all six points are very valid. I think they all need to be worked on simultaneously. Um, I think none are more important than the others. I think it's a good list to start and if you need a motion to, to, to staff. As this is a starting point.
Just before we move to that, I will say I would, would pull, uh, number five out as something we can do simultaneously because. It is a commitment, I believe, to the public to have a follow-up meeting, which, uh, I would, would like to, um. Uh, have a proposed timeline for that to happen. I don't think it can happen before some of these other things happen. But I would like to see it, it, uh, I've looked at or considered for sometime in the future.
I think everyone has its importance. Um, I believe that staff should determine the priority on that. But that should be noted that we do need a follow-up meeting and I mean, they can check the availability in that. Um, but I think they all play their part. I mean, councillor McKenna mentioned data and, uh. Inspector Bannerman would, would be the first to acknowledge that if you don't have data and you can't quantify something, then you can't react. So I think all of these points are, are a good, uh, starting point and template for our staff. And I think we move forward and I'm prepared to make a motion whenever you'd like me to.
I'd like to suggest people to even do that. I'd like to suggest that we look at the end of January. To host another, uh, community meeting. Four months.
So the one question I would ask is with respect to another meeting, um, do you want that to be a follow-up specific to New Glasgow? Because there were, um, obviously we had a large amount of people that wanted to come that were outside of New Glasgow. Um, but really the impacts of what's being experienced is within our own town. So personally, I would recommend the follow-up communication meeting be back to New Glasgow. And I understand and respect that it's a regional issue, but the impacts are not being experienced by other citizens outside of our town to the level that ours are. So if there's a opportunity for a regional meeting, I suggest that might happen, uh, after or outside of our communication. And perhaps that could be something that could be at a location that's at the wellness center.
Yeah, this was, was a commitment by us as, from that meeting that we have a follow-up. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Just one last thing with regards to the report and, and future meetings with, uh, the province and other people. Uh, just the costs alone to our town, our human resource cost and the financial costs. Like to have conversations about how is that to be compensated and that it is not sustainable moving forward. And, um, what might be some logical solutions for that?
Thank you. Uh, just to let you know, the, the what we heard report has been sent to the province and, uh, the appropriate people.
Also, the other thing I would say in, when compiling that report is to look at the police data. Um, there's been, seems to be a higher amount of crime in Ward One. Where is the shelter in Ward One? So correlate some of that data that the police have of calls, uh, uh, break and enters and those types of things. And you'll see that third, the addresses are all predominantly Ward One. So I think that's an important piece that we have to include as well.
Yeah, and number six, which is just what we've been speaking about, um, I, I know our police and our fire department. Keep excellent records of that in public works as well. So, um, report annually on progress outcomes and community feedback. Perhaps we could have, well, we receive our police report and our fire reports, I guess. Maybe if that could be something that we could, uh, highlight each month to, in particular with, um. The Ward One area, what we're talking about. So do we need a motion to approve the direction of council? Okay, go ahead, councillor.
Yes, your worship, all motion that we accept the what we've heard report next steps and have staff look at these six individual items.
I'll second that.
Moved by councillor Joel McDonald, seconded by councillor Peters. Any question on the motion?
Just, uh, one, uh, piece of that, it would be the fact that we have made a commitment to keep in touch with. The, their board, okay, and our, our representation is two or three councillors and staff. So that we continue with that communication, because if we just start planning towards, you know, another.
Because if we just start planning towards, you know, another standoff, it's not going to go too far.
So that was the first thing that I heard out of the recommendation discussion this evening. And at the present time, they are supposed to reach out to us for the liaison committee. Actually, we were promised an update on the org code work more than a week ago and we're yet to receive that as well.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying that they committed a follow-through on what we agreed.
For the record, they also committed to, the board did, to meet with neighbors. And to the best of my knowledge, that has not happened. And that was requested, I think in the December meeting that we met with them last December.
But I understand there was, I believe, one neighbor that they reached out to.
I'm not sure if that neighbor reached out to Viola's Place first or if they reached out. I'm, I'm, I'm hearing both.
Point taken.
Okay, any further questions? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, thank you. Under our committee reports, there is a memo with a recommendation for council to approve one of the three names submitted as the citizen representative for our, from Ward Two for the Community Development Advisory Committee.
Were you looking for a name?
There were three names submitted and we require one.
So I, I was recommending Andrew Miller.
So a motion to approve Andrew Miller. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Move by Council Fraser, seconded by Council Peters. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, we have a memo from the Picto County Wellness Center. Just a motion to receive.
Motion to receive.
Move by Council Peters.
I'll second.
Seconded by Council Jessica McDonald. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay. Next, under new business, we have Deputy Mayor appointment. The motion to, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Shouldn't check things off before I get to them. Sorry, questions by members. Viola's Place Society Taxation Grant, Council Joe McDonald.
Yes, Your Worship, quite a segue into this particular item. It's my intention to bring a notice of motion today. I would like to take, we, we vote the exemption that we granted Viola's Place Society for a taxation grant. That would be for the year twenty twenty-six. As we've just had a long conversation, I don't believe they are listening to our requests or they are being good corporate citizens within the community. So this is symbolic, more so than financial. I mean, it's a thousand dollars, but anyways, I'll put the motion on the floor or a, a notice of motion, which would be a motion on December the fifteenth, next meeting.
What's the motion read?
Motion to read to, to remove the tax exemption for Viola's Place Society for the year taxation for the year twenty twenty-six.
So that you're, you're giving us a notice of motion?
That is correct.
Okay. That's all we need. It'll be on the next, uh, meeting, at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, under new business now, we need a motion to appoint Council Don Peters to the role of Deputy Mayor for the one-year term ending November twenty twenty-six, in line with the current policy.
I so move.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Dorrington, that's the last time I'm going to say that.
That was quick.
I'll second.
Seconded by Council Jessica McDonald. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Congratulations, Deputy Mayor Peters. Okay. Next, we have a motion to approve the attached twenty twenty-six council and committee poll meeting schedule as presented. Move, moved by Council Dorrington.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Peters. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, under new business, we have an email and a letter from A-MANs, the professional service fee. Motion to receive. Move by Council Jessica McDonald. Seconded by Council Dorrington. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. We have a letter from PVSC, the municipal funding for twenty-six, twenty-seven. Again, a motion to receive.
A motion.
I'll second that.
Move by Council Joe McDonald, seconded by Deputy Mayor Peters. Any question on the motion? Just to highlight that there has been a request for an increase for the next two fiscal years. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, thank you. We have a letter from East Hans. It's a, regarding the PVSC memo, read the MGA amendments. Motion to receive.
I so move.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Peters, seconded by Council Jessica McDonald. Any questions on motion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Thank you. Under new business, what we want you to know, report which was released by Viola's Place Society via Facebook.
Motion to receive.
Moved by Council McKenna.
What's up, ma'am?
Seconded by Council McDonald. Any questions on the motion? I would ask that, and this was brought up previously. I was wondering about the accuracy of the information provided, if it's something that we should respond to or just let it go. Inspector Bannerman, maybe I'll ask you your thoughts on that.
Well, of course, we don't control their data. Their data may be their calls for service to us that, that's generated by them. But I can't really speak to that. All I can speak to is our data and the calls for service, we get to that location.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, any further questions, Council Peters?
Uh, I just, there were things in it that I had questions about. So perhaps at the next meeting that they have, that, that are, they have together to clarify things such as, you know, the photos shared publicly that were unverified at times misleading. Like there's some, some comments in it that weren't, I, I, I'm not sure if they're fact-checked. And if they need clarification, we could certainly provide that.
Thank you for that, that's a really good idea.
I can verify that all photos within the report are actually photos from the town of New Glasgow and they are reflective of fact.
Uh, perhaps that, that's a good idea. Perhaps we could, any questions that you have or about the report, provide that to staff. When we meet, we can bring those forward, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Uh, any further questions on the report? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We have an email from Peter McCarron.
Motion to receive.
Second.
Move by Council Jessica McDonald. Oh, seconded by Council Joe McDonald. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. We have a memo on the metered parking for December. The recommendation is to approve the designation of the Picto County Fuel Fund and Picto County Food Bank East for the metered parking donations this year. I so move, moved by Council Dorrington.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Dorrington. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, what, what did I call you? My apologies. Oh, thank you, thank you. All in favor, signified by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. Uh, with that, we're going to move in camera. Thank you, everyone. Oh, yes, sorry. We have a very special birthday this evening. Well, it hasn't happened yet, but it's coming soon. All at Al's, are you going to get the cupcakes, Allison? We'll get Dawn to lead the scene. Media, please, please have a cupcake with us. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
When is your birthday, Jim? When is, when is your birthday?
Sunday.
Sunday. Everyone's a big one after that. Pretty. I know. That's right, nothing coming your way. I wonder who that was? That person? Okay. I like one that doesn't stain, stain my face. Thank you, Blair. Thank you, Morgan. Oh, shoot.